...basketball official in the state, passed away in Rochester about a week ago. He's the brother of Jim Cook, who's a member of our Farmington Sports Hall of Fame and worked a lot of tournaments for us and scheduled a lot of referees for us over the years. So certainly a friend of Farmington's. So we send out our thoughts and prayers to the Cook family. And then yesterday he found out about the unfortunate passing of Cynthia Spock's mom, who apparently had been, had suffered a period of declining health, but did pass away peacefully. So we send our thoughts and prayers out to Cynthia and her family as well. So if we just have a brief moment of silence and then we'll stand for the pledge. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public participation? Anyone? No? Okay. Then we will go into, kind of looks like an intimidating agenda, but it really isn't. But we do have a lot of minutes to approve. So take a motion for a non-public session one of September 18th. So moved by Mrs. Morin.
Second.
Second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion?
I believe session one was approved. It's session four that was left on the table.
Correct.
Oh, we did approve one?
Okay.
Sorry.
Is it one? Oh, yep, that should say four.
So this is session four?
It's four that was in your packet. It's wrong on the agenda.
Okay.
I apologize.
May I recommend that we leave that on the table to have discussion during non-public because that was the reason why we originally tabled.
Tabled one?
Not four.
Oh.
Four. Four is the one that was in your packet.
For September 18?
For September 18. The correct one was in the packet. It was labeled incorrectly on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
So we need to take four, you want to take four off the table?
Not at this time.
No, we're leaving it in.
During non-public. Okay. All right. So then I'll detain a motion for a public session for November 2nd.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Morin, second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion on these.
You don't have any? Uh-oh.
Mrs. Cardinal?
On page two, second paragraph, second line noted that the board had not had a discussion. It's just the word "had" was missing.
Mrs. Cardinal?
Yeah, just a couple of typos to start with. Page one, the last paragraph, the second line, I believe the word "proposed" should be past tense.
Yes.
On page five, also the last line, it starts with "the collective bargaining agreement." I believe it should be "the." And then more substantive changes. If we go back to page one, also the last paragraph, the very last line reads, "she had developed the goals," in reference to Ms. Vaughn, but I believe she stated that it was the Strategic Innovations Planning Committee who developed the broad goals. I don't know if that's splitting hairs for you.
The committee developed the broad categories and started the outline of the goals and then I wordsmithed from there. So we, it was a little of both, I guess.
Okay. On page two, in the second paragraph, that first sentence, it does not make any sense to me. Did any of you read through that and recall the conversation that way?
Is this on page five?
Page two.
Page two.
Second paragraph, first sentence.
No, it doesn't make any sense the way it's read or the way it's.
As I recall, the comment was about the fact that it was based on student assessment scores when there hadn't necessarily been a discussion in that direction by the board.
I just have a comment on page two.
Is there a suggestion of how that should be?
Yeah, I'm at a loss for a suggestion on what would be the right way to state what was.
What if you just cross out "applied as," just "was based on student assessment scores"?
Okay.
Was based on student assessment.
Just cross out the "applied as."
Sure. On page two, one, two, three, four, the sixth paragraph, "I asked Ms. Vaughn if she planned to present these goals in front of the budget committee, not in front of the cameras."
Yeah, I did see that one, too.
Yeah. And we were on camera at the time, I believe, so.
In that same paragraph, after Mrs. McElhenney made her statement, it said Mrs. Cardinal agreed. Where I didn't exactly disagree, I didn't agree. I offered an alternative to setting goals using best-in-class measurements instead of waiting for you to have your baseline and then setting your goals, saying that was a widely acceptable method of goal setting. Page three, sixth statement down, says all of the numbers were going up, and I'm not exactly sure what it meant.
Which, excuse me, which paragraph was that?
Page three, sixth, between the statements and paragraphs, the sixth one down.
Behavioral services.
Yeah, I don't know if it means number of students or.
I think it loses the number of students were going up.
I'm just trying to take my time. Page three, the very last statement about the music teacher. As I recall it, Ms. Vaughn presented that the head count or teacher count when music, when it came to music, was increasing. Were my thinking district-wide in this statement was specific to the high school only.
Can you repeat the last part for me, please? I was trying to capture the last idea.
Page three, the very last statement about the music teacher. It says there about remaining half-teacher, halftime.
Mm-hmm.
But I remember during that initial discussion and then again on November 6th, the discussion has been about the teacher head count when it comes to music is increasing to this proposed budget.
It's increasing, but the halftime addition would be at Henry Wilson rather than the high school.
Okay, so is that where I'm sitting?
It would be a split position between the two.
Okay, then I guess that line doesn't have to be changed then?
Okay.
Because that's specifically talking about high school, right?
Right.
In that conversation? Okay. Then on page four, the fourth statement, could you take a close look at that? Is that exactly correct, accurate?
Special education coordinator is not new next year.
So just strike that line?
Right, and then there was, there's a behavior teaching position, para, one para, one teacher, the halftime music.
Are the behavior and the teacher duplicate?
Yes, they are. Yep.
Okay.
And I think that's where we clarified that there was a behavior professional position and there's a behavior teacher position, so.
And then a halftime.
And then halftime music.
Did you get an answer to question about page three in the middle, six down?
Oh, about all of the numbers, yeah. I think we clarified.
Now, that's the one you were writing on when she went to the next one, but.
It should say all the student, number of students?
Valley View had the highest number of students with autism, but all schools are seeing an increase.
An increase in?
In the number of students with autism.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. And then the last one that I have, again, a statement says Mrs. Cardinal agreed. It was page five, the fourth paragraph down. At that point, I did not share an opinion on the technology change. I asked to clarify and question if including the year-one lease in the operating budget meant the money for years two and three would become default for the, for those years. My opinion on the way that was written is the use of quotations provides a misleading context. We don't use quotations and raise inappropriate anywhere else in our minutes. I don't know why we would there.
Can I make some corrections on page four? This is in the big paragraph, Kelly. And the second sentence, "would like to expand their services to help students who have social, emotional challenges."
Which line was that?
That was the big paragraph, second sentence. And we talked about a service that we want to mirror that is at Valley View.
That is at.
That is at.
Okay.
And then it's not a program that we liked the, so where you see program, it should be service because we're not, just because in special ed that means program approval, but we're talking about a service for all students.
Thanks.
I'll call for a vote as amended. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Opposed. Standing? You abstaining?
Would abstain.
Public session for November 6th.
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Cardinal, second by Ms. McElhenney.
I'm sorry, Ms. Morin.
I'm sorry.
It was me.
Didn't I say Ms. Cardinal?
You did.
Did I, really? Jeez.
Controlism is working.
Sorry, Ms. Morin, thank you. Second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion on these.
I had one on page five, the Farmington High School, the paragraph just reads really weird to me. Something about asking for $13,000 or $12,000. I think that one. Am I in the right one?
Okay, yep.
It was, it's, I don't know, the numbers just weren't working for me written like that.
And it was, the, it would cost more over time if it were phased in, so it'd be about $13,000 if it were done over three years.
Okay.
If it was done as a one-year, she'd estimate it at 12, and I think we're, I think I've actually put in 12.5 for the warrant based on some of the shipping costs we're going to have to look at as well.
Okay, so maybe.
Yeah.
I'd say what that is, 13,000 would be at least.
Well, it's not a least, but if, if we need to purchase the pieces over three years, it's going to cost us more.
Okay.
In order to do, if we purchase the whole thing now, there would be a cost savings.
So shouldn't those numbers be reversed? It would.
Yes.
12,000 cash or 13,000 if phased in over three years?
Yes. But, and probably cash is not necessarily the way, we don't do an awful lot of cash business as a district in.
One-time purchase, maybe change to cash.
Right, right, yeah. 12,000 is a one-time purchase.
That was all I had.
Others?
Just a couple of typos on page four, on the third paragraph. It says, "Fammy began on Monday, November 15th," but that was actually the 13th. Simple, but. And then page four, the fifth paragraph, there's a typo at the end of the eighth line. It reads "they money they," so I think the first "they" should be struck.
Should it be the? No, the first "they" should, yep.
And then, I don't know if this would be important to do, or I'll leave it to the rest of the board on these ones, but on a couple of items, I would like to recommend that the video be checked on what the statement really was, simply because they just don't make sense. On page six, the sixth section, there's a statement about foreign language, and it's written as if that's a change in the proposed budget, but we have foreign language in grades four through eight.
Correct.
So I'm not sure what was said. I was going to go back and watch the video, but I ran out of time after reviewing all the minutes. So I don't know if we want to table this and ask that the video be reviewed?
Yeah.
Is it a motion?
Yeah, I guess we move to table this.
Motion by Mrs. Cardinal, table these so we can review the video, second by Ms. McElhenney. All those in favor? Aye. Non-public session one from November 6th.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Cardinal.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Morin. Discussion?
In light of the guidance that we received last week in our workshop, do we want to look at this as, as we were advised to look at topic or sealed? Do we want to look at this in terms of the board heard a petition for early graduation, period?
I'm in favor of that.
And is that how we should do it going forward?
I think, and that's something, I mean, this predated that, but I think that as we look at our minutes, because there were, there were no motions taken until, I mean, it was the end.
We need to make a motion in order to amend the minutes to reflect.
Current guidance?
Current.
Yeah, good. Guidelines.
Well, we'll probably be doing this, oh, was that a motion or was it, you were asking?
I'm asking.
I should make a motion.
I mean, we'd have to probably go down and do that with all of them.
Well, and I guess that's why I'm bringing it up.
And once they're approved, how, I mean, can we go back and do that?
I mean, if, if they're currently approved, I mean, we're not looking to go back, but the minutes that are currently on the table, just bringing it up to see at what point you want the line of demarcation, considering what we've been given for guidance.
But does, Kelly would need to be. Briefed on, on what the suggestion was.
We've talked.
I mean, and for those of you watching, we recently had a workshop with Vera Christina from the New Hampshire School Boards Association who recommended that, especially with, in non-public minutes, that there are only certain things that were legally supposed to have on there. And I believe that is, who was in attendance?
The topic.
The topic and the vote, basically.
Votes are in public.
And the votes are in public, anyway. Right, action that was taken.
But, for the most part, probably should be.
You know, and I, I think one of the things that sticks in my mind that he pointed out was it's sort of like 50/50, you know? You can, if you just put down legally what's required, sometimes it's difficult to look back and really recollect what those, those minutes are supposed to capture. And certainly, and this is probably the case with our minutes, there may be too much information in these, in these non-public minutes at times, so we have to find that balance.
Balance. Could I move to table the remainder of the non-public minutes so that we can discuss?
Pros and cons.
Yeah, just the right to know law and where it would apply in real cases on some of our recent non-public minutes.
Sure. Second.
So a motion to table the rest of the non-public minutes that are on the agenda tonight.
That will make it go more quickly.
Most of them. Second by Mrs. Morin. All those in favor? Aye. All right, so we'll jump down to minutes of November 13th, public session.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Cardinal.
Second.
Second by Ms. McElhenney. Discussion?
One typo on page nine, the second paragraph. You spell out NHIA, and it's NHIAA, and the A that's missing is athletics. So it's New Hampshire Interscholastic Athletics Association. Or is it athletic?
It's athletic, actually athletic.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Don't think at the very end, page 10, last paragraph, the vote on my motion to add a third non-public session, I don't think it was unanimous. Is it?
I think it was.
Can I go with you?
I thought it was.
Okay. And nothing there.
Did I want to add another one? No. Yes, yes, I did.
Anything else?
Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor as amended? Public session from November 20th.
So moved by Mrs. Morin. Second.
Second by Ms. McElhenney.
I had one.
Discussion on these.
One correction. I can't find it on my tablet, but it should be Farmington-Newt football when we were at the beginning of the report. It just said Farmington football, and it should be Farmington-Newt football. I didn't talk about.
I probably had said a member of the Farmington football team, but it should note that news, a part of that is it's a cooperative effort.
Is that for?
It was for the passing of the student.
It says, it was a student from Newt High School who played on the Farmington High School football team.
It should be Farmington-Newt.
Okay.
That's the name of it.
Yep.
I did write myself good notes, though.
Anything else on these? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Standing?
Abstain.
Financial reports.
If we could just refer to the year-to-date expenditure report, which is for the general fund reporting. At this point, we have about 1% of our budget that is remaining, which is $1,451,000. And I've included a report just with some general notes that's on in the portal, but just to let you know that on, let's see, we're on page 24, let's see, concerning the utilities for heating oil, my apologies, page 26, for heating oil for the district. We essentially prepaid for our heating oil for this year, resulting in a savings of all of these lines, which are line 695 through the next page of 690, line 700, so we have about $94,332 in savings. We also, we do have to pay for some of the taxes, although we're a government entity, we do have to pay for some of the federal and state taxes that are applicable. There are no, there are no waivers for them. And some of those taxes that we are billed for that we're not exempt are, for example, Leaking Underground Storage Tank Act, you know, Oil Spill Liability Act, oil analysis discharge fees and oil pollution fees. So both the district and the town do also pay for those fees as well. Concerning our snow removal, I did go back to the vendor that we used last year, and he has agreed to hold his rate at the same rate of $58 an hour for plowing and sanding, and to hold his rate at $85 firm an hour for a loader if necessary, if we need a loader. The only issue is that salt and sand mix is, it's a cost that's out of his control, so that rate will increase by $3 a yard. But we do have confirmation that they are holding that rate. Just to report further on this, all longevity payments that are by way of collective bargaining agreement or school district handbook, they've all been encumbered in this financial report and/or when they're encumbered, and then at the last payroll, some were paid out, and that encumbrance gets relieved. So that has been addressed. Let's see, on line 106, you'll notice that there's a negative variance, let's see, that's on page four, a negative variance of $632, and that's something that just needs to be corrected. It's just a different location that should be corrected, so that will be addressed in our next financials. As far as all of our textbooks for the district, you know, we're 40% of the way into the school year. All of the principals have addressed what they need for some textbook needs. There are some funds that we still have in the area of $4,000 to $5,000 that we are going to need for some consumables.
And some of those are second semester pieces.
Correct, so, you know, we would wait to see exactly what would be needed as January and February approaches. Relative to student placements, and I know Ms. DeMello will probably be talking a bit more about that in her report, but for right now, as it, as it looks, we have approximately $62,000 in savings under special education placements, but, you know, with that, there is a caveat that if a student does come into the district, that that number can change. That's something that Ms. DeMello and I, we talk and the superintendent, we.
Sometimes do.
That's correct, that's correct. If I could just draw to your attention to line 265 on page 10. For right now, we have an appropriation for the district resource officer of $75,600. At this point, we've not received a progress billing, but that's generally, we receive two bills a year. I would expect to have an invoice from the town by the beginning of January. They're in the process, they'll be closing out their books, so you will, you should see some activity in the January financial report. Let me see, if I could just draw to your attention, line 466, let's see, that would be on page 18. You'll notice that the amount remaining is $17,448. is seventeen thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars, um, that is a, a wage that is, um, for our, um, SAU administrative assistant, and, um, we're kind of treating this a little differently because they are, um, just, it's on a time sheet, it's a time card, so we've not actually encumbered all of that, but I've taken that into consideration for our, um, for an expense for the district. Um, that's really all I have in reference to this particular report, unless there's some specific questions.
Questions?
Um, I just have a question regarding the school resource officer. Didn't we receive a grant, or is that for next year, or will that have any impact for this year?
It will have some impact for this year. It's kind of one of those, chief and I are still trying to figure out where it falls because it started November one, and so, it will impact some of the first bill that we get, and then some of the next, but we still have to do, it'll be, this part was at full, this part was at part, this part is, so, we're still trying to figure out and count days, so.
Sure.
But we will see some savings there.
Okay, great. With just one percent of the budget left, are we holding back on anything right now? We usually have a little bit more than one percent left at this time of the year.
But this is with encumbrances that have been put in there, too, so, um, I don't think we're.
Sounds like we've been, did we encumber a lot, a lot earlier this year?
We did encumber more at an earlier point this year.
Because it just seems like to be in December with one percent of our budget left, and we're going through March.
But understand that the largest percent of our budget is salaries and benefits that are encumbered, anyway, so.
Right. So, we're not holding back on?
The budget is not frozen, we're, I think we're in okay position at this point.
Um, if we could just refer to, um, the all funds revenue report.
Wait a minute.
I'll do a more expenditure question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just waiting.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, on line four fifty-three, it looks like we got a credit of thirteen hundred dollars. It's page eighteen. Is that some sort of accounting correction that we're, we're seeing, or?
Line four fifty-three, uh, we did a journal entry on that. Um, our dues should be specifically charged for New Hampshire School Boards Association.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was a dues payment that should have been charged out to, that's the thirteen hundred dollars, so you're showing a negative, so it was a journal entry.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you look on page nineteen, line four eighty-five, you'll see a corresponding entry of, reported period of thirteen hundred dollars.
Meaning that there was a, an administrators' association that was charged to the school board association.
Right, so, the line for, should be strictly for New Hampshire School Boards Association expenditures.
You don't get to pay for me.
I'm wondering if we got a little rebate.
I, we look for all rebates.
We get money back.
Doesn't work that way.
If you have homemade dessert, you'll get money back. Um, okay, on page twenty, uh, line five twenty-sixth, I see an adjustment where the workshop monies that were supposed to be used for support staff was adjusted down to zero, but I couldn't find an, a corresponding, um, adjustment, to see if maybe we just use a different account, maybe for PD?
Um, let me see, off the top of my head, that was something that was done very early on, in the beginning of the month of November, um, in that we re-classified for another function to go to a workshop, um, and I'm not, it's not certain if it was the, right, it was for Henry Wilson, um, why am I thinking it's for the nurse? Um, I can certainly dig further for that, and let you know.
We definitely need a professional development.
Absolutely, right. My thought is that, is that the principal did give up some funds, which is, it's not coming to be for another individual to go, and that function twenty-four hundred is really intended to be the principal or, um, secretaries in the office, so she would have given up some funds to, for someone else to attend something.
And then, lastly, the other thing that looks curious to me is on page thirty-two, line eight twenty-two, um, it's referenced as the tech team's telephone.
Mm-hmm.
The budget was adjusted down, but yet we seem to overexpend it on that budget amount total.
Um, what we're doing, actually, I do have some cleanup to do there, because actually, it's a combination of two, uh, the telephones, uh, how it was budgeted was that was for money in the annex, and now that, um, that individual is over at, at Valley View, we do have some correcting journals to be doing on that and readjusting the encumbrance, so, actually, technically, I, I think that that's going to end up being a savings to the district because that phone line in that office is already existing.
It's existing, and we can't take out the phone line altogether because it's required for the alarm system, so we can't remove it, but it doesn't get quite the same usage as it did.
Okay, so we are, in fact, overextended, overexpending on our telephone costs overall.
No, it's just, it's purpose in the wrong place.
It's just line between lines. Okay.
Anything else?
Okay. If I could just, um, touch on the revenue, um, report for you, um, just, um, a couple of things you'll notice under, uh, let's see, line eighteen, the transportation vocational ed, um, uh, those funds have come in, we did receive from the state eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars, so we're in budget, um, on that. I'm going to shut my phone off, sorry. Um, and, uh, let's see, under line nineteen, uh, for our Medicaid, um, we did just receive another payment today, so, we're basically, we've collected about forty-three percent of our expected budget on Medicaid, um, and, and even though we're forty percent of the way into the school, that even includes, or the fiscal year, I mean, July and August, we didn't have a lot of activity, so, I'm feeling pretty confident that we're do, doing well on those collections. Um, let's see, the other piece that I just wanted to reference is that, um, I think Ms. DeNata's also going to talk about that, is that we have received our funding, uh, for the student assistance grant in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars, and I believe that that's been captured in here, excuse me, I'm trying to identify that in, it has been set, yeah, I know it has been set.
It's in the, the grants.
Yeah, yeah. Um, we might have just finished it, I don't know, we did finish it on Friday.
I know it's in, it's in the grants revenues.
Yeah, it is. My apologies. Nevertheless, we did have a conference call with, um, Department of Health and Human Services to be able to work through the mechanics of setting up the grant, and, um, and be able to recuperate our funds, um, pretty seamlessly and through, um, and efficiently, um, through an ACH process, um, which they'll turn it around to us within about ten business days. Um, the last piece that I just want to report, um, concerning on the revenues, is that we have received the final, um, uh, approval on, um, the focus and priority, um, and so the district is receiving an aggregate of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, and that.
We had mentioned this earlier, but as our focus priority monies in the past have been about ten thousand dollars a school, um, our income from this is considerably greater than what we had projected, so I do need to ask for a motion to accept the additional funds from the board, so that that's in our record, um, so it would, it's fifty thousand dollars for, uh, Henry Wilson, fifty thousand for the high school, and seventy thousand for Valley View.
I'll make the motion that we accept the fifty thousand grant money for Henry Wilson, fifty thousand for Farmington High School, and seventy thousand for Valley View.
And those are the focus priority funds, that takes the place of the old CINNE funds.
Second by Mr. Frieda, discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Thank you. I have a general accounting question when it comes to special revenues, um, so I see sometimes there's funds that are encumbered on that report as well, not just our expenditure, or a year-to-day expenditure report, for example.
On the revenue?
Yeah, on special revenues. Um, for example, when we get a grant that includes some sort of a salary or a stipend.
Okay, no encumbrances are on the revenues. No encumbrance on the revenue.
It would be under the expenditure report.
Under the expenditure report.
But it's, well, yes, so, the special, the grant special revenue funds.
More the thicker one, the fifteen-page one.
The year-to-date expenditure report grants special revenue funds.
The all funds revenue report doesn't have an encumbrance line.
It should, it should be encumbering revenues.
The grant special revenue funds, year-to-date expenditure reports.
Yes, that, that's the expenditure, that does have an encumbrance.
Okay, there's a question about that one when we get to it.
Okay, okay, we can roll, we can roll right into that if you'd like.
Okay, so, I'm trying to relate our actions as a board to these reports, and so, for example, when we approve a nomination for a position that has a stipend, um, and it's funded by grant dollars that would be captured on this report, at some point, we should see those monies get logged as an encumbrance because we are now obligated to pay that stipend to the individual that, whose nomination was accepted, right? At some point, maybe not immediately, but.
For, and we could probably, I can't even, um, on page, for example, um, page six, lines, um, one forty-five and one forty-seven, we know for a fact who those powers are assigned to the IDA grant in those, in those school buildings, um, and it's also based upon a contract that's been approved, um, and those are encumbered. Um, a lot of the other, um, pieces are, for example, the Twenty-First Century Grant, depending on what the, um, wages are or time spent in that after-school program, that's on a time card, so that's right down to.
So, those won't encumber.
So, they typically aren't.
Because I have, I have some people that work two days a week, I have some people that work three days a week, next week it could change, and so, those aren't encumbered because it's not the same type of contract as if the teacher is working under Title One or IDA.
But under the new robotics education grants, there's one for each school, when the stipend is paid, it will show as expended to date.
Actually, yes, and those grants are running slightly differently, too, because of the way that they have requested.
They don't always run the same fiscal year as a school, so sometimes you'll have grants that will.
Sometimes they're twenty-seven month grants, sometimes they're six-month grants, and so, and sometimes it's, okay, we've given you the money, you take it all, and then just report back to us how you've spent it down, and so, they all get reported somewhat differently, which is awkward, but they, there's very clear, here's your portal, here's your reporting, and I'd be happy to sit down with anyone who wanted to see it, it's just, they're not all the same.
So, so I guess, at, at June thirtieth, um, two thousand and eighteen, we'll have everything reconciled on the grants, all the submittals go into the state, and then, if the grant goes, for example, until September thirtieth, then there's a reconciliation of what the pool of money is.
Mm-hmm.
The balance of those monies get reconciled through the portal, and it kind of resembles as if it's a new budget, but it's called a carryover, so periodically you might see , um, carryover, or you'll see amendments to an, to a grant budget, and that's some of what that resembles.
For instance, um, there will be an amendment on the Title VI budget, we have monies budgeted there for there, um, none of our area, um, police or sheriff's departments have the capacity to run that program for us this year, and so, I will rewrite those monies. I know, I just got the last bit, that they won't.
They were all gone home last year from Stratford County.
I know.
What's the reason?
So, uh, they don't have the trained personnel to do it, they don't have enough people, and the few that they have trained, they've pulled back for other purposes because they don't have enough folks to be out doing what they need done, so, um.
That's disappointing.
It's very disappointing, so with that, then I will have those funds that I'll need to rewrite and repurpose, so that will be an example of a change, you'll see.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that education.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to Diana's report.
So, hopefully you've got that in your, um, packet, it's narrative, the, um, big thing that we did most recently was, November thirtieth, we had the panel presentation to kind of launch the student assistance program, um, the title was Next Steps: Prevention and Recovery in the Era of Addiction, and we had, you know, a good deal of community members, Rick Pelkey from Farmington Responds, Lynn Fuller, um, from Family Support, who was a family core, um, Support Coordinator in New Hampshire, Don Curtis, recovery coach, um, two representatives from Live Free Recovery in New Hampshire, who are going to be the counselors in our district, um, Rochester Community Recovery Center, Chuckie Rosa of Chuckie's Fight, and then two teen students from another school district that came to kind of share their story, and it was a small group, but it was great to be able to kind of get together and, and, you know, kind of have a conversation of, you know, the profile of, of, you know, issues that are coming up, um, you know, and issues related to, to student prevention, um, in terms of drug use and, um, misuse and abuse, um, you know, and kind of talk about, you know, how we're going to move forward, so that was, that was nice, and that was November thirtieth. Um, services began today, so there was a counselor in Farmington High School that split four days, Farmington High School, one day, Henry Wilson, that doesn't mean that, you know, something comes up at one of the other buildings, they won't respond, they certainly will, we have a referral form that we've sent out to staff, um, and the counselors, Ashley Sheehan and Bob Fagan have both been in the building, so they've been, they've been a face, and they've had students already approach them, um, at the high school, that said they were in recovery and would love to be, um, teen leaders, so we're really thrilled to hear that, so that's, that's, um, exciting news, so that began today. Um, we're going to be doing, Mr. Coco and I will both be attending a CPI training, um, to be instructors, so that we can continue that work in-house as opposed to having to contract the VAT. Um, in terms of court involvement, we have, you know, six families that are involved, um, and that involves, uh, ten children, and we're joined on six delinquency cases at this time. I got a chance in November to participate in an evaluator for an onsite, um, for, um, special education compliance, so that was really informative in terms of going through the files and looking at, you know, what the state of New Hampshire is looking for in terms of compliance, so that's something I use to inform my core meetings and pass off to, pass on to others. Um, we also received notice in November that Farmington has not been selected for compliance or improvement monitoring in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, which is good news, that means that on the rubric, um, and within the cohort that we're in, based on our student population, um, they've indicated that we are just fine, and they see no reason for concern, um, so they will not be visiting us, so that's always something, that's good news to hear that you're, you're doing what you need to do. Um, and that, that is my report for the month, unless there are questions I can address.
Awesome. I, I would highlight that Farmington received a score of zero on their compliance report, which is the best you can do, that was no issues, so, um, that was very good. Nicely done.
Yeah.
What has been the track record here before that?
We have had, um, and this is back when I was a special education teacher, so this is going back a ways, um, we did have, uh, an onsite training we had to do with the DOE because there'd, there'd either been a complaint or, or some kind of finding, um, but that's going back a ways. But that's going back a ways, and I don't recall.
The last three years that I've looked, we've been fine.
Good.
Any questions?
Could you just elaborate CPI? What does that mean?
Oh, crisis prevention intervention. So if a student is escalated, you know, what are the first things that you do in terms of getting the student to become de-escalated? It also involves, you know, kind of a hands-on piece that if you need to physically manage a student, not everybody gets that training, but mostly we find at the lower grades that that becomes a difficulty. High school students usually will just leave, middle school students will usually just leave, you know, or find a space and kind of get out of there. But that's, that's also part of the training as well.
And what agency is that through?
Actually, it's called Crisis Prevention Intervention, is the name of the, the particular model and the people that do the training.
Oh, it's a standard training, educational business, if you will?
Right, it's a model that.
Yep. And it's fairly widely used across the area.
Any other questions?
I just have a quick question about, on the backside, the shorty's little number. Twelve, there are 12 out-of-district students. That 12 isn't reflected up above, is it?
No, it is not.
Oh, it's separate?
It's separate.
I was just wondering what the breakdown was. What, do you have the break, do you have a breakdown?
I can give, yeah, we have one, two, three, let me see, three ninth-grade students. Yeah, it's mostly, mostly high school.
I was wondering, like, how many are high school, how many are middle school?
High school, middle school accounts for 11, and there's one younger than that.
Okay.
It looks like our number grew slightly from the beginning of the year.
Or, I'm sorry, what?
It appears that the number of special education students has gone up slightly from the beginning of the year. It looks like it's the younger ages.
Right, we've had a number of pre-K referrals, so our pre-K number is, actually, I was speaking to the director for Rochester, and we have 13, and she has 20, so, yeah. If you look at it per capita, that's more for us.
What did you say went up? You just, overall numbers?
Overall, it looks like we're at a five.
But of the 12, of the 12 that are out of district, out of the 11 that we've placed out of district, how many of those 11 happened this year? Are those all just, were they all pretty much?
One, we had one that came back and one that just went out. So that's all carryover from previous.
Thank you. Anything else? Policy Committee.
So you have some sample policies in your portal as a first read. There are a couple of notations I'd like to make on a few of these. We're, we set a fairly ambitious schedule for ourselves to try and get as many of the should-haves or need-tos done this year as possible. We have more than 200 that we probably need to review. We'll see how many of those we can do. So we have seven for you tonight. So the, and I don't have these in the same order, so. So if we look at the order that they're on the agenda, I didn't have anything to add for revenues from local tax sources. One of the things that we discussed at Policy Committee was removing the categories once we've adopted a policy, because once it's our policy, it's policy. It's no longer, you know, the recommended, if it's policy, it's policy. You still have to follow it. So, but that's from the School Boards Association. And these are for first reads. I don't know if anyone is prepared to discuss or speak to tonight, or if you want to just kind of throw out any questions and then look at these again on the 18th.
I think some of them are pretty straightforward. I think we can probably approve of this final reads tonight.
Okay. So do you want to just do one at a time?
Look at those in order?
Okay.
So DEA, which is revenue from local tax sources.
Motion to accept as a final read.
Motion by Mrs. Moore to accept as a final read. Second by Mr. Frieda, discussion on this?
The, the policy as we have it in, previously adopted locally here, it was called DE and not DEA. So that would be a slight, very clerical change.
And I think, does this add the legal reference as well?
This one was fine.
And that the final one will remove the category of.
Yes.
And the disclaimer information.
Correct, yes.
All those in favor of final read? Aye.
I hope it's just a battery is dying.
Not typically what the battery backup sounds like.
DJC petty cash accounts.
There were a couple of things that I would like to.
Let's put it on the table. A motion to accept as a first read.
Okay.
Second by Mrs. McElhenney, discussion on these?
Two things. There is a DJC-r that it was not included in your portal or in your packet. So we probably need to include that, and I apologize for its.
So you tabled this one?
So we could table this, and I would say that the two other things that I would look as the end of the first line, to take out the and/or provide and change that to on an emergency basis only, and then take the last line in cases of emergencies out, looking to, not wanting this to become a convenience fund, but wanting this to be, if there's something that's, has to, that's one thing, but this isn't just, oh, we didn't bother to plan ahead, so therefore.
So, well, we can just adopt it as a first read and then amend it next time around.
Okay.
Since that's what the motion was. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor as a first read? Aye. KCD, public gifts and donations.
The one thing I would like to add to this.
Motion to accept it as a first read. Second by Ms. McElhenney. Okay, go ahead.
At the end of the first paragraph, I would like to add a line that says scholarships are not classified as gifts, just to make sure that it's very clear that that's a separate category.
And then, this, the Policy Committee liked all of the language in this particular policy and all of the dollar limits that are described. In particular, the very last statement of the policy speaks to crowdfunding sites. That was a big reason why the School Boards Association or the state felt that an update was needed, because they see more and more use of crowdfunding sites like Donors Choose, which is a widely approved and adopted educational crowdsourcing website that's controlled and so, some policy around that. And at what point would the superintendent need to approve before it goes out to the public? And an FYI to the school board that these are out there. One thing that we, we did want to recommend is, it discusses a dash-r appendix, and this is a subsequent conversation, maybe to apply for all of our policies, where there's a distinction between policy and procedure. Perhaps it would be prudent for our board to have a procedures manual, specific to what we consider when it comes to making decisions about donations to accept or reject, the best way to formulate your motions, things like that. Just some best-known methods and procedural considerations, less more, less of a dash-r policy that we hold ourselves to the letter.
Because once it's, once it's part of the policy, if it says that, you know, we will only consider this, then you can't without changing the policy. If you have it as part of a procedural manual, it gives you a good checklist to follow without necessarily the backing into a corner.
So we would recommend, as a Policy Committee, that considerations for when to, when is a good idea to say, we're going to pass on this type of donation? When would something fall under that guidance? But knowing that every single question that comes before the board needs to be deliberated, a motion and delivery, everyone.
It would be good to see what KCD-R says on our policy now.
We don't have one.
We don't have it now.
This is a brand-new one. KCD is new, and we don't have an R, and the Policy Committee is recommending that this board not adopt a dash-r, but instead, take those considerations and apply it to a.
Procedure manual.
Procedure manual.
Any other discussion on this? All those in favor as a first read? DKA, which is payroll policy. Motion by Penny as a first read. Second by. Oh, sorry, go ahead, I just have something.
I have two things. Two things that I wanted to add to this. Under salary deductions, I wanted to add a five contributions to the New Hampshire retirement system, because that's not spelled out, and if, particularly if we have people come in from the private sector, they don't always understand that that's something that has to happen. The other piece is under the second paragraph, and this has some more teeth to it, but because we don't actually have this anywhere in our policies, I'd like to at least have it somewhere. Failure to accurately report attendance or submitting false time cards is grounds for disciplinary action up to and including termination by the superintendent, because there's nowhere, anywhere in what we have that says this has some teeth to it. And while I absolutely hope to never encounter that, and I don't feel that I have, you know, a long-standing list of folks that I need to go wave this in front of now by any means, I think it's important to have that there as a safeguard so that people understand that time cards are important and, you know, and it doesn't mean that that's the first thing that we'll go to, but it means that flagrant, we would have that option.
Am I to understand that there isn't anything in regards to a policy or procedure regarding that at this time?
It's not stated in that way. It's kind of under those nebulous other things that could get you in trouble, sort of, but it's not necessarily spelled out, and I would like to have it clear.
And there's nothing, there's nothing recommended?
Not that I've seen here, but I certainly could dig further, if you'd like to table this and, and look, have me look.
It's a first read.
Well, I want to make sure that, that that type of wording in a policy like this, for lack of a fancier way of putting it, is okay. I mean, as, as you look at the wording for grounds for dismissal and master payments and things like that, I want to make sure that that doesn't fuzzy up anything.
Certainly, I will take a look. The other thing I would like to see is that this just become payroll as opposed to payroll procedures, because to have the word procedure in your policy somehow obfuscates what it is you're doing.
So do we accept it as a first read the way it's drafted now, and then these adjustments are made for a second read suggestion?
Well, I mean, I guess this is what I'm trying to say is, I'm trying to think of a better way, but if we put that language in there, would the, would the Commissioner of the Department of Labor say, oh, yeah, you have every right to do that? Or is it like, well, no, you can't do that, there's a different procedure for handling those types of mistakes? I don't know.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
So before we add it in, or make any changes, I mean, she can check on that. Before she adds it in, we can look at it again, still take it as a first read. Hope we can table it. I don't have a feeling on it one way or the other.
We have a motion on the floor to accept as a first reads.
The way it's written without the amendments or with the amendments that Ms. Vaughn just suggested.
Right now, it's a first read as.
It would be like this. So I can vote on this. I would vote no if we were voting on the amendment, just because we're not clear yet. But I can, I can certainly vote on this. Any other discussion? All those in favor as first read? Aye. GBI, which is staff participation in political activities.
So this one, some of the, oh, sorry, Ms. Vaughn, you can take it.
I think a motion to accept as a first read.
Motion to accept, by Mrs. Moore as a first read. Second by Ms. McElhenney.
So we have a local policy, it's code 4245. The language is a far reduction from what the state recommendation is.
It only has about the first paragraph and a half.
Right.
Without the legal references.
Yeah, and if you read through the explanation from the sample that we've provided, the reason for the update is a change in the Attorney General's recent, within the last couple of years, interpretation of the electioneering law. We discussed this a little bit at our workshop for the day about digital communications. And so, this, this covers what, what is appropriate and what isn't appropriate when it comes to employees of the district using their working time, when it comes to political opinion or information sharing. It clearly delineates when you are educating about political process and government duties, that is completely fine.
I think it, it better delineates the protections that employees have to. What we have now is basically, I don't, don't really speak up, but of course you can, under First Amendment, which doesn't really say much. The clarification, I think, is important, particularly given our current political climate and the interpretations through the VAG's office. I don't want anyone to be caught in the middle.
So would this be an update to the existing policy, or would this be in place of?
Yes. It would, it would reclassify 4245 as GBI and expand the content thereof.
So this would replace it.
We'd no longer refer to it as 4245 once this becomes final.
We're trying to get rid of the numbers, please.
I'd like to amend my motion for a final read.
Okay, motion is amended. I'll cross out your second.
Wasn't it first read still?
Final read. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Sorry. IGE, parental objections to specific course material.
This is one where we don't have a local policy exactly along these lines. We have one pertaining to health education, but this particular policy would be new to our district.
A motion as a first read.
Motion by Mrs. Moore as a first read. Second by Ms. McElhenney. Further discussion?
This will also require a review of KEC and HIAM, which we will bring to you next time. So this, I would recommend just as a first read, because we don't have the other two pieces ready to go. But it gives you the legal references and update in a more expanded format for.
So can you talk a little bit about any costs associated with alternative education? I mean, what, what kind of cost are we thinking a parent would have to, I mean, say, they don't want their kids to watch the video on puberty.
Well, and that would be.
Do they have a cost?
That would be under a, a different policy than this necessarily.
A good, oh, a good topic that could come up in your basic curriculum is evolution. That would be a great topic where certain families wouldn't want their student to learn about the concept of evolution.
All right, so I guess that was my question, not so much the topic, but what kind of costs.
Typically. What is it that you are asking to be presented alternatively, or what are you looking to present alternatively? And if the parent says, I want this instead, then that may become an independent study that way. It doesn't mean that we're going out and purchasing parallel or alternative curricula for a given set of topics.
Okay.
And, you know, as it says, nothing in this policy shall be construed as giving the parents the right to appeal to the school board.
Yeah.
It's not a, it's an instructional materials review. It's not a, you know, now I want this all removed.
Okay.
The alternative still has to meet the standards of the state. Yeah, it says that too, yeah. Further discussion on this? We have a motion to make it a first read. All those in favor? Aye. Um, and then last one is EBCA, which is emergency plans. To the motion.
Oh.
Motion by Mrs. Cardinal for what?
Uh, first read.
First read, second by Mr. Frida. I saw your hand. Is that okay?
Our current, uh, local policy is code 2112. And this needs to replace it.
Yes.
Oh, really?
And there are no legal references anywhere. So this is, and this is a, while it's recommended, it does tie into the fact that each building has to submit emergency plans to the state by September 1, and that's a requirement for us that's by the State Department. So this is, basically just kind of puts a little bit of oomph to that.
So have you already sent out schematics as well?
Um, that's something we're going to need to discuss as a board, as far as the digital format and the acquisition thereof.
But we've submitted the plan per the deadline for each of the three schools.
Yes, and basically, we had to, we had to submit what we have at this point. There is a review, and then.
Is that the flip chart?
Um, it's flip chart plus.
Okay.
Um, and then there are pieces then that will be amended. We're expecting our security audit, hopefully in the next month or so. We still don't have a date on that yet.
Have we done an annual review of what we submitted?
We submitted our pieces. Admin team met this summer. We submitted for September 1, and we're waiting for our security audit as part of that review process. And then we will sit down and go over that securities audit.
What does the annual review mean? Like an actual, like, what's the word I'm looking for?
Like a team comes here?
The, the team sits down at, my interpretation is we look at what we have in place, what needs to be updated, what is working, what is not working.
So not an annual practice of the plan?
Um, that also is, I mean, we have drills at each building that are, that are set. Some are announced, some are unannounced. Some involve stopwatches, some do not.
Well, it just, it just seems like in the past, we, I, and I may be wrong on this because I'm not on campus to know, but it seems like in the past, they were reviewed and practiced more commonly, or more, more, I don't know if we're doing that anymore.
Um, we have at least monthly drills at every building.
Fire drills.
Fire drills. We've done lockdown drills. We've done children in place.
That's why I say I'm not on campus to know.
So, and sometimes they've been drills, sometimes they've been.
Right.
My motion was a first read. I think if we could, for the second read for next meeting, have the dash R appendix, the regulations and procedures available to look at.
Anything else? All those in favor as a first read? Aye. Any old business? Brian, you weren't planning on giving a report tonight, were you?
Um, I actually was. I had a report here. I'm not going to be making them the next meeting, so.
Okay, because I didn't see it on the agenda, and I noticed you were here, so.
Let's.
You want to be prepared to do that now?
Do you have one, Mr. Frida?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Digital copy would be great. Then I don't have to fight it over.
I can actually email you a digital copy, so I'll do that.
Then I'll type other people's work.
All right, I'll email you a digital copy. I have it on Word and everything, so.
Good.
Is that, that's all right?
Yes, it is.
All right, um, current events and student opinion. Current sample size for my survey is 44, so still not that big. I'm trying to get more. Um, current ads, all winter sports, three basketball teams in spirit are now playing. Recently, student government has been revived in a farming high school in meeting, this time it's consisting of all class officer. Oh, slow down. I couldn't tell what you were saying first. Been revived at Farmington High School, this time consisting of all class officers in each class, and meetings are scheduled to take place every Monday during B block of real time. Primary goals consist of encouraging student participation in both school and community, and attempting to improve Farmington High School's reputation. Members are currently in discussion of how to achieve these goals, and have already begun plans to advance these goals, I can specify if need be. The National Honor Society will be working with Tigers to Tigers on Sunday, December 17th, if I recall correctly, was the date. I might be off on that one, to assist in, in setting up and running a community dinner at the First Congregational Church in downtown Farmington, if I recall correctly. Finally, last month, Farmington High School was actually visited by, I hope I get the names right here, Justin and Ryan of Recycle Percussion, wow, where one of the members actually told the story of how he formed the group. The students and staff gave them a very cheerful and welcome reception. On student opinion, some more responses are being submitted. Some of the trends reflect a split opinion, factoring in, actually, I need to edit that out, because those misplaced responses I had noted on here, I actually found in this file, so if you're going to cross that out. Student opinion is apparently divided regarding real time, with some appreciating the help in time for, or worth that it grants, while others, again, were expressing reservations regarding the number of classes they take in school and the need to add relaxed classes as a result. A similar split is accrued regarding the school dress code, but details have yet to be gathered, and students seem to have an objection with how discipline is being handled. Again, the details are not yet known. I'll ask about these two things in more detail in a future survey. I'm hoping to put another one together and send them out to advisors. One last noteworthy piece. One of the responses I mentioned, and, snap, I didn't actually bring it tonight, but I mentioned a possible glitch in the Power School app. It says follows, quote, "The way Power School is set up on the app, it defaults as Q4," end quote, which I believe means quarter four. Other responses have yet to mention this, though.
There was a problem right around the time that report cards were run, and I believe that has been corrected. If it has not, let me know.
All right.
Okay.
If I get any more notes on, on the Power School app from the responses, I'll tell you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Brian on his report? I just have a comment. Yeah. If you're going to send this to me, make sure all those things you're not sure about are sure. Thank you.
Um, no, yep, I'll check with, uh, heck, tomorrow, I have this typed up here. It's from what I remember today. When I say I'm not sure, I mean, my, I mean, I'm going off of honest memory here, which might be a little off. I'll make sure to double-check them when I, when I make the change to the document to send to you.
Ms. McElhenney?
I just had a question. How is the fundraising efforts going for the field trip?
That's what I was going to ask.
Senior class.
Um, we're continuing the, if senior classes continuing the Yankee Candle fundraiser, apparently that's going to be like, people can still, he'll purchase that online for our class until like January from what I, and January, that much I do know. As for people getting the forms in, we currently have 19 graduates on tour, or so I've been told, from our class advisors, will accept 20. However, we've extended the deadline for getting those forms in for students, because we kept getting multiple comments from students saying that, yes, they wanted to go, they kept forgetting that they had the form, or forgetting to get the form in. But as of right now, we have 19, and we're hoping to get much more. We're a little under a third of the class.
Okay, great.
Any other questions for Brian? Comments?
Congratulations on making high honor roll.
Mrs. Moore just pointed out you're on the high honor roll list. Well done.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you, Brian. All right, any other? Old business or other from the board?
Just a quick announcement. I'm trying to find the details of it though, so if somebody else has something. I lost it.
Okay. Uh, do I have anything yet? No.
I gave myself a note, but I know it was for non-public, so.
I know what it is.
Blessed Bargains is open every Saturday for the month of December for your shopping. I just read that in there too, under Farmington News, sorry. Stressed I got, I'm trying to fill it.
Mrs. Smith, the art teacher at Valley View, she asked for me to relay a verbal invitation, and a physical invitation will follow, but December 14th will be.
Five to six.
Yes, thank you. The art opening for the Reflections Competition that the students have, you know, who elected to participate in have entered, so there'll be a tea, and we want to celebrate their creativity for all those that went above and beyond to enter into that art contest.
And that's a Thursday at Valley View?
Yes. At Valley View.
Five to six?
Five to six. Everyone is encouraged, open to the public, bring your family. It's in the art room, and light refreshments will be available.
Thank you.
Well, and I just have another aside comment. I went to the tree lighting ceremony, and I just wanted to thank the elementary school. They did a great job doing the chorus of the Christmas carols. It was very nicely done.
Props to Mrs. Bondi.
She did a great job.
And speaking of music, we will be having a parent night. Information should be going out in the next day or two, on the 13th of December, for parents at Henry Wilson, whose students are interested in concert band and music lessons. So that will be at 6:30, I believe, that night, but information will be going out, and there should be a, a phone call and an email coming.
Any public participation? All right, and our next meeting is scheduled for December 18th at 6:30 right here. Thank you to those of you who tuned in from home this evening. Thank you to those of you who came out. I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session one under RSA 91A colon 3 to A, B, and C for nominations and resignations, right? If we don't have any, we have.
Just nominations.
So by Mrs. Moore, second by Ms. McElhenney. All those in favor, aye. Good night.